For what we're doing here also. And just let's go over again how you can submit questions. We need to have questions from those that are watching. You can comment right on the Facebook Live if you're watching from there. You can Facebook message the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce. You can text to 605-481-2493, or you can email Kelsey, which is K E L S E Y at BrookingsChamber.org. There could be, I serve as your state representative here in District Seven, and there could be a change in the election date. On Monday, we will take up a bill that the governor suggested that could move the election to a Tuesday in June, and of course, that would also still be tentative, but at least it does push the election out. So we'll find out more about that on Monday, or when the bill actually gets taken up, and if it's approved and signed by the governor. I want to thank the candidates for running. Now I'll introduce our candidates, and we have Tashi Birando, Wes Cheddar, Jackie Johnson, and Kyle Dahl. How the forum will work here is we'll have a two-minute intro from everybody, and then we'll have two minutes for each question that you each have. The timer is Dan over there, and if you keep an eye on him. And then we'll see how we're doing for time remaining, and how long there'll be closing comments. I'd also ask that you pause just for a minute as Kelsey moves the Facebook camera around to make sure that it's in front of you so people can hear your answers. And so we will start off with our introductions, our opening comments, and that's with two minutes. And our first person will be Tashi Birando. Go ahead.
I'm Paitu Ashde, Tasha Ngumpa Birando Amachiapi. It's a good day. My name is Tasha Ngumpa Birando, and I want to thank you for tuning in to this interesting format we have. I was thinking, some of us have submitted videos with One Million Cups as well, and I really appreciate everything the Brookings community is doing using technology so that our democratic process can continue to roll along even during a pandemic. So I just wanted to thank you, and it actually kind of made me think of something in Lakota that the men practice called Waglotapi. Because I don't know about any of you, but I think we're South Dakotans, talking about ourselves is not something we want to do for that many minutes. Anyway, it was a sharing of deeds to build up the whole community. So I think that's what we're all doing here, and I'll do my best. Whether it's American Indian families facing unexpected obstacles during commencement, or children being overly tracked as they get older and creating a deep divide between the trades and liberal arts, I will be the voice that speaks to real-life issues facing 21st century families. Currently, I'm a homemaker, wife and mother of five. Last year as a mother had a child in elementary, intermediate, middle, and high schools in the Brookings School District, as well as a baby at home. With this experience of parenting children in all the schools recently, and three currently, I will bring to the Brookings School Board a needed reality check of how school policies affect everyday families. Professionally, I've worked as a weekly newspaper editor and reporter covering school boards and municipalities both West and East River. I've also worked to support my family when needed as a worker in the Brookings manufacturing industry. I'm a tribal member from the Oglala Sioux Tribe, born in Pine Ridge, and my family is here because my mother and I are also descendants of early Brookings County settlers, and we make our home in the Hillcrest neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to Wes Cheddar.
Thank you. I'm Wesley Cheddar, and I'm a candidate for school board, and I want to thank you for listening in and being a part of this virtual experience, which is new for us as well. I'm a candidate for the school board because I believe and I feel we have a great investment in our present school system. I'm an incumbent and running for reelection. Two years ago, if you recall, we had a disastrous $5 million opt-out, and I saw that need for perhaps more financial and fiscal planning. So there I am, having been the Vice President of Finance and CFO at South Dakota State University for a bulk of my career. Before that, I worked for the South Dakota Legislature, including the Director of Legislative Research Council. I'm involved in local community and statewide boards and commissions. I've served currently on the, as Chair of the Advanced Foundation Board, whose role is to improve the facilities and support our advanced program, and we have been highly successful in that, including under my leadership. I care about Brookings. I care about the children we serve. Our learners deserve the best education we possibly can. Our taxpayers deserve accountability, and of course, our teachers and support staff, administrators deserve the best support system we can give them within the resources we have. And therefore, I'm a candidate for reelection for a three-year term, and I appreciate your support.
And now we'll hear from Jackie Johnson.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for joining us today for this virtual forum. Like we said, it's a little different than what we're used to, but we're here and we're doing this, and I'm glad everybody's here. So for those of you who don't know me, I am a candidate for the school board, and my family and I live here in Brookings. And I primarily grew up, actually, in Wyoming, in the Rock Springs-Green River area, and I moved to South Dakota as a sophomore in high school where I graduated from TF Rigs in 2000. When I graduated, then I went to the University of South Dakota and pursued my business degree in health administration. So I know it's a little hard to be a USD grad and live in Brookings, but still something. And then after that, I moved to Brookings in 2004, and I began working at Dectronics. Worked there for a little while, and then switched my career and moved to Sanford Clinic and worked there for about eight years. And I am currently working at Brookings Vision Center as an optometric assistant. During all of this time, I was also a coach for Cheer and Dance, as well as a couple other things that I did within the community. And I also was on the board, the education board at our church, which currently has a daycare and school, so that I could bring a little bit of information that way. And I'm also, right now, the CFO of our company that my husband and I own called M.R. Johnson Furnishings. So I really think that fiscal responsibility and budgeting is something that's very important within our school district. I know we do that now, and we do a good job at it, but continuing to do that is something that's very important. I also feel that having parents on the school board is a good idea, as the decisions that are made by the school board affect us and our children. You know, if school isn't going to be held, then that's something that we have to go through as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to Kyle Dahl.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kyle Dahl. I am currently the State Electrical Inspector for District Three, which means it comprises of Brookings County, also includes Hamlin, Dool, and Grant Counties. I have quite an area to cover. Took on this job in 2018 after the state contacted me to fill the position that was vacant for a number of months. I began working in Brookings in 1996 for a local contractor, worked my way up the ladder from there. Worked for one contractor at that time, and then switched over to another in 2002, and then worked that job as electrical manager until my resignation to take on the State Electrical Inspector job. I live with my wife and children. Have one in junior school, one is a seventh grader, and one is a third grader. So I also have children in school, and I think that is an important part of the process of becoming on the board member. Looking on to other things, I do believe in community involvement also. Not one to sit on the sidelines and complain about the way things are run. I'm usually one to step in, get involved, and try and come to a solution at that point. Further on, in a perfect world, things weren't going on the way they were, which is a test for both parents and the school to do online and close schooling. We'll see how this works through, but it will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Just as a reminder for questions, if you're watching this on Facebook Live, you can comment for the question. You can Facebook message the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce, or you can text 605-481-2493, or email Kelsey@BrookingsChamber.org. And our first question comes from, is an email question, and we'll start with Ms. Birando. And the question is, "Do you support a bond referendum to upgrade Madera Elementary and replace Hillcrest with a new school?" And you'll have two minutes to answer the questions.
I think we need to do research to look into the state of our facilities, especially over at Hillcrest. I think any of us who are parents over at Hillcrest, which I am, we do walk through there and see that things aren't quite the way they are over at St. Camelot, and we all want the absolute best for our children. And I feel that there is, we're getting close to capacity. Madera would be an obvious choice because of the land around it that could be expanded into, although I really feel that we miss something when we don't have more neighborhood-oriented schools. So my answer would be, I'm not sure, but I think that's a very good idea to look into, and we are going to need to be looking at it fairly soon, I believe, with the increasing class numbers. My son, Hillcrest, also is responsible for the SDSU kindergarten program, and so, you know, that's another part of administration that has to come out of the Hillcrest school. So it's definitely something we need to be looking at. But we would also have to look at busing, because currently we have bus stops at Hillcrest that go to all the other schools for the inter-school busing, and that's a really important service. So it would also affect our busing, not just our facilities. So I think it's a larger part of, you know, looking at the whole ecosystem, so to speak, of how the schools work together currently, and again, you know, that neighborhood school situation.
Thank you. Mr. Cheddar.
I have given a lot of thought to this in terms of what is, what we may need to do for Madera and Hillcrest. Both of them need substantial improvements relative to their infrastructure. We have, meanwhile, invested $24 million into the Mickelson Middle School. I believe that the taxpayers and the supporters need to have full knowledge of what's going on. I am working on a plan to, a financial plan that within the existing resources, we can do $6 million, possibly $8 million worth of improvements. That doesn't take away the question always whether or not we should build a new school, but the taxpayers need to know what the alternative is to a new school relative to the financial obligation that would be undertaken. We have, one-third of our capital outlay fund right now is going just to the Mickelson Middle School, and we have deferred maintenance. We've got purchasing of textbooks and technology and school buses and all that come out of the capital outlay fund, which is about a $5.3 million tax revenue and resource. So I think the constituency here in Brookings needs to have facts. We need to have input from the community. We need to have input from the families that attend these two schools. We need to have input from the teachers. I'm going to say it twice, because I think teachers who work there every day need to have particularly a good chance for input, and of course, we need to have input from the greater Brookings community. So this is a process. So my answer is, let's engage in a process and collectively in the community decide whether or not we're going to invest in renovation, or we're going to invest in a new school. A new school is $16 million, so we have to balance that. And that was what was invested in the Dakota Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Ms. Johnson on this. I'll repeat the question. Do you support a band ref, I'm sorry, a bond? Let me start all over there. Do you support a bond referendum to upgrade Madera Elementary and replace Hillcrest with a new school?
I agree with the other two candidates that we really need to do research into this and find out what is best for our children. We have lots of big classes coming through Brookings right now, and I know that there's been many classes that they weren't expecting to be as big. I know my daughter's class is one of the biggest classes right now in the school district. So we really need to do planning, find out what's best for our community and what's best for our taxpayers. Is there the ones that are going to be paying for renovations or a new school or whatever we decide? And I really think that there's going to have to be a lot of planning going into this so that we don't run into problems with it not being done in the correct time, or something like that, or not being up, you know, the children having to adjust to different situations that, you know, can definitely make their school year a lot more stressful. So definitely need to do some research on this and see what's best for the children in our communities and in those areas that live around the schools. Madera, right now, could definitely use some renovations. I have a child who goes to Madera, but I also feel that, you know, there's probably other schools within the district that could use that as well. So definitely, I would say my answer is, you know, we need to plan it out. We need to come up with an idea for everybody of, you know, which would be best, maybe give them some options, you know, a new school or just renovate, and then how would we figure that out as a district? So thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to Mr. Dahl.
That is an excellent question on what's the best approach to remodel, upgrade, or replace. And looking forward to look to the future, Madera Elementary is a 1970s building, and upkeep has been normal on that for a building of that size and age. Hillcrest Elementary is a 1950s building, and life expectancy on these buildings when they're put up usually was a 50-year lifespan on those. Hillcrest has exceeded that already, and finding the money to continue with maintenance on that, balance that against replacing the structure. Long-term, we're not looking five years, we're looking 10, 20 years. Replacing Hillcrest may be in Brookings School District's best option. Short-term, we'd like to find the money to upgrade and upkeep the buildings rather than replace them at this time. Sometimes throwing money at the solution is not always the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. And as we talk about replacing Hillcrest, I just need to comment that I graduated my fifth grade at Hillcrest, so that school has been around for a long time. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Cheddar, and this is an email question. "Do you support building an alternative school if it means cutting budgets elsewhere?"
Currently, the high school under the leadership of Dr. Jensen is going through a powerful planning process to identify the need. You have to start communicating what the needs are for our, for some heart, about 950 high school students, and what we can do to better serve them relative to absenteeism, failing grades, and also source of other cultural and practical issues relative to about 100 students. And so I believe in planning process. I believe that we can get there from here. We're going to identify resources, and there is a process in place that is looking at how we can find about $200,000, give or take, to implement in the current CTE building, which has been now in a planning process, is available for additional use, including this program. So to answer your question, I support the alternative high school. I think we can get there without a real dramatic shift in resources and to, in that we will have 100, maybe 60, 80, 100 students, but then that will change the mix at the high school. So we may be redirection, redirecting some resources from the high school, but there's been no conversation that there's going to be a redirection from other schools in our 3,400-student district to support the alternate high school.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
This question has come up a few times already. When I first heard this question, I wanted to do some more research on it, as I had not known this was a plan in Brookings, and I did my research on what they've come up with so far in the planning process, and I really did not realize how many students it affects. I think this is a great way to help those students that may need additional, you know, things from, you know, like you said, having, being truant or failing grades. You know, those students might just need a little extra, and this might be the way to do it. They kind of wanted to do it as a setup of more of a MCL, which is kind of at their pace of learning, and I think that's a great idea. But I also really think for sure we need to start with the planning first and figure out what's the best way to do it, and make it fiscal responsible for our, you know, school district, and make sure that it meets the needs of these students before anything else, because they're the ones that are going to, you know, get the most out of this. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll repeat the question here. "Do you support building an alternative school if it means cutting budgets elsewhere?" Mr. Dahl.
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's very unfortunate that a few years ago, we did have something like that. It was Select High, and I've had a few parents ask me if I was going to be talking about that and attempting to bring back that concept. Some students, agreeably, through school and high school, do need a little extra help before they're allowed to graduate and sent out into the public. These programs do offer that before the individual, the student, gives up completely and drops out of school, legal or not. It does happen. Seen other school districts struggle with this, too. They're dropout before they're given the help they need. And the phrase in that question that I caught is if we're willing to build another school such as that. Don't see the need to build a school to house alternative learning center like that. We can look at places around that would be available for leasing long-term, rather than going through another bond draft around them for building that structure. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have Ms. Birando answer this question.
Thank you for that question. I do not think whether it's finding funds from somewhere else or creating a new line item or some other funding structure, if we had $1 million to throw at it, let me put it that way, I don't believe we need an alternative school. I graduated in 2000 from Volga, so I knew kids that utilized Select because they had issues with being in juvie, or, you know, had skipped school enough, or whatever their issues were, they ended up over there. And so it was a small office structure over by downtown. It didn't see that many kids, although I believe they also helped do some of the planning. And because of budget cuts, I believe, is why we don't have Select High. So there are obviously children in our school district who are dealing with legal issues and learning issues, but my main concern, and this is what I've had people contact me once they knew I was running for school board, was that they were worried about a separate but equal situation. Are you going to have all the chemistry facilities? Are you going to have all of the facilities for those children as you would for the quote-unquote "good" students? The other thing is, I just had a senior graduate from high school, very bright student, if I do say so myself, freshman at DSU now, and truancy and wandering the hallways is an issue. It was an issue for him, although at least he wasn't getting in trouble. He did often want to work on debate or one thing or the other, and sometimes his teachers didn't know where he was. So right now, I don't know if you know this, there's boards over one of the bathrooms in the high school because of vaping issues. This is not an alternative school issue. This is a supervisory issue that we can fix with TAs in the hall. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank the public for all the questions we're getting. We're getting some really good questions. So this next one, we'll start with Ms. Johnson, and the email question is, "Mass customized learning has been implemented in elementary and middle schools. Do you support this model for high school?" And we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you for that question. Mass customized learning came into Brookings a couple of years ago when my son started kindergarten. I currently do not have a child in mass customized learning, but I know they're planning on moving forward with it within the school district. I support it at the high school level, but I also feel that there needs to be an option for a traditional classroom, as mass customized learning may not fit every student. There are some students that, you know, need that traditional teacher helping them, you know, teacher kind of, you know, you need to get this done, we need to do this type thing, and I really feel that we should have the option as parents and as, you know, our students to be able to pick a traditional classroom if they want. So I support it moving forward. I just would like to know maybe a little more about what their plan for the future is in five years, in 10 years, you know, how are these kids going to go to college with, you know, the mass customized learning, as that's not something that's there right now? So that would be an interesting thing to see how they move forward with their education. But I really feel we should have the option of having both the mass customized learning as well as our traditional classrooms within our whole school district. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. That question was also addressed with One Million Cups, and thinking long and hard on that, and I do have one, my youngest is enrolled in that program. I can see it making a difference right away with the way he learns and the way he engages himself with the learning on there. I still see this as a pilot program and needs to be monitored very closely to see, like Ms. Johnson said, what's it going to be in five years? What's it going to be in 10 years? If they do show signs of staying equal with their classmates, it's worth continuing. If the newness wears off on this and the students resort back to below standards, it may have to be an idea that's abandoned and address another program that may help them, but I see this as still being a pilot program that needs to be monitored very closely.
Thank you, and I'll repeat the question. "Mass customized learning has been implemented in elementary and middle schools. Do you support this model for high schools?" And we'll go to Ms. Birando.
I believe that MCL is a fad in education currently, and as other schools drop it, I think Brookings will find themselves doing it as well. I do believe in individualized learning for gifted, as well as children who also need other help. I feel that the Brookings School is doing a fantastic job. One of the things that I think we are seeing is some children do want to move quicker, other children need a little more help, and I feel, though, that MCL is not always the way to do that, that traditional teaching is very, very necessary, and that they're there for a reason. I also feel that sometimes, whether it's alternative school or MCL, sometimes this is also a Band-Aid fix for ADHD learners, where they actually have issues with executive function. So self-paced is not always the thing that they should be doing. Instead, they should be encouraged to do enrichment projects within their own traditional classrooms. So I do not really support MCL, although I am interested in hearing from parents and children who have found it to be something that has really powerfully changed their educational experience for the better. I think we can learn from them, but I am not certain that this is a very, I also believe it's very much a pilot-type program. And I also would like to ask how much money we've spent on the resources for this, which I'm sure Wes could tell us better, as that's one of the larger criticisms, actually, of MCL, is that it's a fad pushed by corporations. So maybe you can enlighten us on that. It is something I'm curious about, so thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to Mr. Cheddar to answer the question.
In the last two years, I've asked a lot of questions about the program. I've visited classrooms. I've visited particularly at length with Don DeCries' classroom at the Dakota Prairie, and it is impressive. On the other hand, it's not new. I went to country school, and we had such a program, although it was not called that, in which you have, were able to advance in your areas beyond your stated grade. Also, I believe in Also, I believe in leadership. I believe in leadership of our school system. I believe in leadership that starts with everybody that's involved in our school system, including the teachers. And I have to say that they, they understand the balance between a traditional school-setting classroom and a, the MCL. And with that, we have that balance in our current school system. As far as high school, we need to continue, understand that we need a balance. We need a balance between those who want to remain in a traditional setting and those in a, in this new program. This program has been tried a lot of places, in high school as well. But, I think these programs will evolve, nothing is static. We're learning from it. We have teachers every day that go in the classroom who are doing their best, highly stressful, highly stressful environment to do their best every day to make this program successful and to give this children. Now, if you listen to watch the video that was done of Madera, we have, it is a, it is a mind changer in terms of how these kids view the program. So, I would say that I would support looking at it and the planning and that the, at some point in time, the superintendent and the school board will have to make a decision. And at this point in time, I'm certainly open to the, to the program as it relates to the high school.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next question, and Mr. Dahl will be, starting with this question. And actually, we've gotten the question twice here, once by email, one by text. And the question is, with the city population growth shifting to the South-Southwest, work will need to be done with the school boundaries and neighborhood schools. The other question added on to that about Aurora's growth also, so be considering Aurora when you're answering this question also. What are the candidate's thoughts on changing school boundaries to accommodate this growth? And we'll start with Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. In fact, school boundary is something that's required to be readdressed in two years by the school board. By that time, I also see considerable growth to the South, and with the developments going on in Aurora, we're probably looking at adding and shifting school boundaries to the South and to the East considerably. With that area and, and center of population, more of the building that we would need to do would most likely be taking place during that, for that direction. Each, each elementary boundary is specifically, I'm sure what the question is about, each elementary boundary is required to maintain equal enrollment. So, as we see where the developments and growth are going, that too is also the direction that we would need to focus on incorporating and, and shifting boundaries as required to maintain equal attendance throughout the elementaries.
Thank you. And now, we'll have Ms. Berondo answer this question.
I think it's very important to keep the integrity of our school boundaries as neighborhood schools, at least at the elementary level. And so, you know, it is something that obviously is just part of the planning that goes on. As far as, I'm not sure if the question meant extending the Brookings School District boundary in and of itself. And again, obviously, you know, it should keep pace with the city and beyond again for that community reason, and, you know, that's something that's obviously just built into the planning and we'll be looking at. So, that's what I got.
Okay, thank you. I'll repeat the question here. With the city population growth shifting to the South-Southwest, work will need to be done with the school boundaries and neighborhood schools. We want you to consider Aurora also with this, as we had a question about Aurora. What are the candidate's thoughts on changing school boundaries to accommodate this growth? And we'll go to Mr. Cheddar.
Well, we are, we used to be a 10-section school, and now we're a 13-section school. Obviously, there's been growth in the last 12, 15 years, and this is largely a K through 12, excuse me, K through 3 issue impacting the three elementary schools. And the fact is, we have a 3-section school at Hillcrest, a 4-section school at Madera, give or take, and a 5-section school with some sections at 6, classes at 6, in Dakota Prairie. And so, the question is then, where do you move the boundaries? This, this takes a lot of study, folks, and I think Kyle was right in that there's a plan, there's a policy in the, at the board to review this in two years. And so, we have lead time. One of the first questions we ask is, how does it affect the local school, you know, the community school? And just where do you move that boundary? And how does it affect the local property tax values? With that, I, I think we ought to ask the people who know, and that's people who are in the real estate business would be one, one area I'd, I'd ask. Would you get input from those who are probably marginalized in terms of where they're at and located and would be changed? This has happened before, and you have, you have to have an information system out there that people know well in advance, this is, this is a subject that's coming up, this is gonna affect you, and not just spring it upon the, upon the community, which is, which in a prior era had happened. And so, I believe that, that there will need to be some change, but the change has to be planned and has to be based on data. We need to know the numbers. Will it change a 3-section school? Or will it maintain a 3-section, section school at Hillcrest? These are, this is the fundamental question that our data has to drive our, our process, and you have to start the process relatively soon, and those, the person that's elected in this election will certainly be facing that in the process of the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll have Ms. Johnson answer the question.
Thank you for this question, as I live a little bit in that area, and we, when we first did the boundaries a couple of years ago, it was really hard to know, okay, which school is my child gonna go to? And how does it affect my child? You know, if they've already been in school for two years and then like to go to a different school, it might be a little different for them. But I totally understand, there's a ton of growth growing on over there, and I really think redoing the boundaries every couple of years is a great idea, just like Kyle said. I mean, that's already something that we're gonna plan on doing. There is a ton of growth in that area. I also really think we need to be diligent though in making sure that, again, the planning comes into play and that we do have these correctly divided so that the schools have all the things that they need, whether it be enough funding to do the title program for kids that need it, or lunch program, or whatever that may be. We need to make sure that when we do the boundaries for the schools, that all of those schools are able to have those things to offer to students. As I know, when Dakota Prairie was first built, they didn't have that kind of funding to have a title program for their students. So, I really think that's something that we need to be diligent about as members any, within the school district, so that we can offer all of those to the students based on the boundaries. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you. And this question will start with Ms. Berondo. What is your position on the school Sentinel program?
Well, I'm wondering if this question isn't partially looking at school Sentinels who are carrying weapons on them, if that's maybe what they're asking?
I think it has to do with the carrying of weapons.
So, you know, I graduated high school in the year 2000. Littleton happened when I was in high school. And so, there's many days now as a mother where, you know, you send your kids to school and you just pray that they will be safe. But I will tell you what I tell my children, and, you know, I grew up West River where things are a little bit different, but I tell my kids that, you know, some of our children are, you know, taught to do the shelter in place and, but I tell my kids, especially the older ones, that if they see something happening and they know they are in danger, I'd rather they were killed with a bullet in the front of them than the bullet in the back of them, that they face it head-on. I'm not always real impressed with how some of the training we're doing because there is other training that's coming out. That said, I don't really want to see any guns in our school, including with the Sentinel program. I, I don't think it creates an atmosphere that is conducive to unarming children who are considering the horrific acts that these, some children choose to consider. So, that is, that is what I feel. Again, I feel instead of Sentinels, we should be talking about better policies at the, especially at the Brookings High School. They try to keep the doors locked, yet children do wander the halls. Students who do well are just ignored, and kids who cause a little bit of trouble are obviously worried about. Again, two bathrooms have been boarded shut due to vaping issues. We already have a situation at the Brookings High School, and it could be done, fixed with more TAs and more administration in the hallways assisting teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cheddar?
If you've been in the school system and entered it, the security system that's in place is, has changed dramatically since a decade ago and evolves into a more secure environment for our students. Things can happen though, but right now, we have improved security in place with the change in the way you enter the Mickelson Middle School. These are all efforts to, to improve the security of our students or staff and whomever might be going to the school system for deliveries or whatever else. My answer is no, at this point. I think that we have, have some efforts we can make to improve the security, and we don't need guns in school, and that is, but on the other hand, we have leadership in the school system. They have the data and can show where our, where we can improve, and maybe we need to make some financial investment in security as well, then that's a different issue and will take you down a different path in terms of decision process.
Thank you. And the question we have right now in front of us is, what is your position on the school Sentinel program? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you for this question, as I feel this is something that has been debated quite a bit within the last couple of years with our students being safe in their schools. I grew up with, you know, I'm a hunting family. I definitely feel that this can be a way to protect our children, but it's so many different things that go into this program that is definitely something we need to discuss before we put it into our schools. I agree with Mr. Cheddar as they're really trying hard to make our school safe so that people can't get in, you know, with the security. I mean, if you go in now, you have to have your driver's license to be able to go into a classroom, and that's something that just started this year, which I think isn't, is a great thing, although it's, it's hard because I don't always have my driver's license on me when I go to the school. But I really feel that this is something that can be discussed based on, you know, how safe we feel our kids are right now and how to keep them safe, you know, like our shelter in places and the training that we do. But I know that the Sentinel in place, if that's what they want teachers to be, the ones that are doing this, or, you know, a lot of them don't feel comfortable with that. And so, that would have to be something we would have to discuss with the teachers and with the principals and everybody who's in charge of the schools to decide what is the best thing for our children and for everybody involved. So, I appreciate the question, and it requires a lot of thought as we go through the next couple of years and, you know, keeping our kids safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
Sentinel program, that's a very important and a very serious question. I may think outside the box on this one. I think it's cause and effect. We're seeing a dangerous trend in not only schools but society. Being prior military myself, I can see a trend in the past 10, 15 years of weapons becoming the solution for a lot of disgruntled problems in schools and in communities. We're very, very fortunate in Brookings, in Brookings County, that we don't see the problems and the numbers that other larger cities and towns and school districts have. With that question, I think we get tunnel vision. Where, and as a parent of four, where are the parents on these childrens that are having, these children that are having problems, that feel that the solution is to, to take it out at school? I think there's more going on at home that we realize, and we may need to start there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Cheddar, and the question is, and this was a text question, what is one thing you would, you would do to improve the school district? What is one thing you would do to improve the school district? Mr. Cheddar?
This is a very critical question because the board faces this all the time. And I believe the most critical thing we can do is to get our financial plan in order. And this then affects all of our planning, all of our program, and all of our support system. And in my past two years, I've, I've worked hard in terms of trying to change the trajectory of our financial situation in our Brooklyn School District. Our $20 million of local resources that we provide into the school system has to be deployed in a way that is supported by the community. And so, my answer would be that the most important thing we can do right now to improve the school system is to gain confidence among our electorate, gain confidence among our teachers, get confidence among all those patrons of the school system that our financial house is in order, and I believe we're getting there and can continue to improve on that.
Thank you. We'll now go to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you for that question, as I feel that I agree with Mr. Cheddar, and this is that we really need to make sure that our financial response, our fiscal responsibility and our finances within the school are up to par. We have so many things that we want to do within the school district, as we've had questions come to us already about, you know, updating our schools and building new schools and all those things, and without a balanced budget, we are not able to do those things and add to it if we need to. So, that would be something that definitely we need, that we could work on as a school district. You know, there's, there's so many things with, we are such a growing community right now. We grow so, so much here, and we have so many kids within our school district, and that's definitely something that we need to be aware of and be diligent. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Mr. Dahl, and I will repeat the question. What is the one thing you would do to improve the school district?
One thing I would do to improve the school district, what I do like, I have seen, and the question has not come up yet, is academics versus athletics. Athletics, very important for school. I see athletics as being important for team building and physical fitness. Apart from that, more of a balance toward the academics side of it. We have the potential to graduate students that can go on to any field whatsoever, focusing entirely on four-year school, not necessarily, let's focus on trades, let's focus on items that are needed in, in the community. So, we have a chance to keep those students in our area once they do graduate. Too many of them, we've let, we've let go to the larger cities. We've lost many of our graduates to Sioux Falls. We lost many of our graduates to other states. Let's, let's let them know that there are opportunities here, and whether that's taken on the role by the parent, by the administration, by even homeroom teachers. Let's, let's give them a sense of belonging to the community and do our utmost to keep them here.
Thank you. And now we'll have Ms. Berondo answer the question.
The thing I think we should focus on, and this is coming up again, is the school board will be reworking their vision plan in the next couple of years. And I just want to, what I would want us to look at is e pluribus unum, out of many, one. The diversity of Brookings is growing every single year, and I don't feel that our school district is even admitting that to a certain degree. I also believe that the neurodiversity of our school, that some of these issues that we're talking with Alternative High is actually issues with students who have not been, who probably have underlying ADHD. probably have underlying ADHD and have not been diagnosed or worked with. And so, I feel that all of this can be summed up by e pluribus unum, out of many, one, where we bring back a vision of civics, of citizenship, and of being good relatives. Again, everything we've kind of talked about up here can go back to really helping students not just prepare for a career, which is so crucial and important, because humans define themselves by their work, but also by the relationships we build, and the solid liberal arts education that gives them a sense of the global humanity, as well as the smaller pieces of diversity. We have over 19, 20 languages spoken in our school district. We need to be partnering with parents to make sure that all of those students feel that the larger Brookings community recognizes their diversity as both unique, as well as something that is a strength for Brookings, which I believe absolutely it is. If we want global learners, we need to also understand that technology is not divorced or separate from the liberal arts, excuse me, and that neither are their trades. I feel that we are overly tracking our students in that way, and we're overly labeling our students, when we really should be bringing them back to a better civic education, a better, stronger liberal arts education, and allowing them to express themselves in other arts, sports, and trades. But again, revisioning as e pluribus unum. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and last question, and we're going to do this, kind of a little bit of a lightning round, got one minute to answer this question, but it's a pretty straightforward question. And that is, "What is one thing you feel you could bring as a school board member that sets you above the others?" And we'll start with Ms. Johnson with this question. And if you can, one minute, please, one minute.
Thank you for this question. I really feel that I am speaking for the school board, and the things that sets me apart is, I have, I have a lot of experience with working with kids, being a, you know, a coach and things like that within the community. And I also have a child who has a disability within the school district, and it's interesting to me to see how they help her and help other students like her. And I really feel that I could bring some information to the school district about that, or the school board about that. So, I appreciate the question, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl.
One thing that would set me apart from the other candidates, my extensive knowledge in construction and background in, in building trades, with also myself being, I was once officer in charge of my military unit. Being able to balance that with what cost and value difference is within the school district, the troubles that were presented at the Mickelson Middle School expansion project, apparently caught most of the school board and school district off guard. I was, I was needing to stop by as part of my state duties to stop at these construction sites many times, and I was not caught off guard by that. I could see the progress of construction and could see that they were not going to make their deadline.
Thank you. And the question is, "What is the one thing you feel you could bring as a school board member that sets you above the others?" Ms. Birando.
Well, again, I don't think I want to talk about who's above one another, but definitely set apart is that the Brookings School Board as a whole acts as a whole. However, diversity on that school board is really, really important. As a tribal member, as a woman, I believe that I would add a very crucial voice to the communal decision-making that the school board does. I believe that also, as a journalist, I'm fantastic at asking questions. And so, I think that would be also a very strong part. And I also am concerned that sometimes we get bogged down in some of the day-to-day business and forget the humanity on the other side. So, as a mother, that the policies I have affected us very specifically, and so, I feel that that is also very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cheddar.
I believe that my experience over the years, I'm off, I'm able to offer a global view of what's the school system is all about. I have proven leadership in many areas. Right now, I believe our challenges are lie in some of our facilities, and we're going to do something about it, it's a matter of what path we take. And so, that would, to lead me to my, my point again, that the financial expertise that I'm able to bring to the board has already been evidenced by policies and drafts and best practices that we're deploying and using right now, after my two years of service in the board, and I intend to continue that and provide expertise and, to the, to the system. But again, all of our staff, all of our administrators and the board are all leaders in a, in a way, and we need to capitalize on that. We need to ask, ask the questions, allow people to lead, be leaders, and show that leadership in a way that is effective for the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry to say we didn't get to all the questions. I was very excited, how many questions we got? We got more questions for school board than we did for city council. So, I think that's really positive. Now, we'll have one minute for closing comments, and we'll start with Mr. Dahl.
Thank you for this opportunity. I do stress that everybody, no matter what by means they can, please vote this spring, whenever this is going to be, April 14th, or move back a couple of months, but please keep in mind to, to absentee vote if you can, go out, or please visit your polling places. And this is the way democracy works, you're able to voice your own opinion and get, get the candidate in you want. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, everyone, for being here at our virtual thing that we're doing here. And I, again, just stress, you know, again, go out and vote, it's, it's your duty, you know, make sure that you do it however it means necessary to keep yourself safe, keep your family safe, whatever that entails. And, you know, thank you for listening to us and to giving us great questions here, as this is something that everybody within the community is interested in, and keeping our children educated, and is, is only something that, you know, we can do as the board and as a community, is to make sure that they have the best education. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar.
I want to thank those of you who have come up to me before we were in this current situation in the community and, and expressed your, your appreciation for my candidacy. I want the constituency, the taxpayers, the voters of Brookings to know that I'm, I believe in numbers, I believe in data. Our data, if we have the data, we can make the correct decisions. And I'm here to, to express my, my candidacy, and that I'm, I'll listen to the constituency and the patrons, as well as those who work for the school, just to try to make it better every day.
Thank you. Ms. Birando.
Thank you. I would just encourage you to vote whenever you can, mail-in is a great option, and thank you for this opportunity. I also wanted to pick up on something that Kyle said, and I think it's a military thing, because I learned it from my older brother, who's a retired Marine and Air Force, is, we should not just criticize, but we should also participate. That's what makes democracy democracy. And last spring, when I walked up and returned my son's eagle feather to his cap, the main thing in my mind wasn't as an angry mother, it was more so, we aren't breaking state law today, is what was going through my mind. And so, I think we need a voice of courage, diversity, and integrity in the school board. I think we have already had great leaders that have showed us some really excellent work on the school board. It's, we love the Brookings School District. And so, I just want to encourage you, whether it's voting, or when we came into the school board meetings, or as a journalist, when I've covered school board meetings and city council meetings, there's very little public involvement. So, I would just encourage you to not just criticize, but also participate. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all of the candidates. We have four candidates running for one spot, and I think that's terrific to have this participation. And I was very excited about the number of questions we got, more for school board than city council, which I think says a lot about this community and what they believe in with educating our, our children. I've sat here and moderated several of these, and I've also been in your, your seats moderating these, and it's tough not to have an audience here to, to speak to. And plus, at the end, usually clap for them, because, just to recognize the good work you've done. So, you got a few of us in here at least, so we're going to clap for you to say thank you for being candidates. Yeah. And now, I'll turn it over to our chamber executive, Kelsey Doom.
All right, guys, thank you so much. Thank the candidates for coming. I know it's a little bit difficult to participate, but I'm glad that we got to do this. So, absentee voting is available if you need to make a copy of your driver's license. Hy-Vee is offering free copies of driver's licenses. For more information, just give the city a call or go to their website. I think that's all the announcements we have. This is brought to you by Clorox. We've been wiping everything down, so we're pretty, pretty excited about it. Thank you, guys, all for participating, and we'll see you soon.